Just in time, it looks like. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 25th, 2024 North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Bible.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Siddig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here. Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There will just be one addition in the appointments for boards and commissions. I'll get to that when I get there, but otherwise, it should be as it is in front of you. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
Moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is our consent agenda. As you can see, it's a lengthy one, pretty straightforward. Otherwise, could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Thanks.
Mayor, I'll second with a comment, if I may.
It's quite all right. Go right ahead.
Okay. So, received some feedback from a couple of constituents about the lengthy list of the cigarette, tobacco, and nicotine vape shops that are on the consent agenda. I was very appreciative of the input, although I personally believe in the free market and we certainly, I will not be voting against any of these tonight. I think it does bring up something that we need to look at and maybe address as a council down the road of these types of businesses and maybe new ones coming in. A lot of our neighbors have turned to putting a halt on new businesses, especially vape shops and smoke shops. So, just something I want to bring to staff's attention and maybe something we maybe take a look at in the future.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, mayor.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is our public comment time. This is time for anyone in the audience to address the council on items that are not already on our agenda. You're welcome to step right up.
My name's Randy Belknap, and we were here two weeks ago. We were inviting anyone to come out and take a look at a property where you're thinking about putting a bike trail and the use of eminent domain. We've only had one person reach out, and that was this morning. He reached out, wanted to come out between 3:00 and 4:00, called us after that, and said that he'd gotten wrapped up. Could he come tomorrow morning at 8:30? Which is fine, but no one else has reached out at all, which, that's, that's not the way things ought to be done. We're offering anybody to come out and take a look again. So, somebody wants to, we'll be here after the meeting again. Come out and take a look. The next thing I'm going to talk about is your actual schedule of dates and what's all listed on there. There is an owner's review meeting, April 23rd. There's one today. None of those have taken place, not a one of them. And that's per shive hattery, and that's per their, what they said they would do, but not one of them has taken place. The next thing is eminent domain. In 2013, Iowa Supreme Court ruled that eminent domain could not be used for bike trails or recreational pathways. That has not changed. In your description that we've gotten from Glenn, he calls it a road improvement. That road's less than about five years old. What needs to be improved on it? Not a thing. As smooth as it could be, people race up and down it, that might be an improvement, but there's no road improvement. Let's call it what it is. It's a bike trail. Even city paperwork shows it as a recreational trail that the state Supreme Court says you can't use eminent domain for. One of the things I was going to talk to all of you about was alternate locations for this bike trail, if you would have come out. Here's a satellite view of the area. Right up here at the ball diamonds, you've got six feet and no bike trail. So, all right, use your requirements for a bike trail as 10. Add six. That's only 16 feet, and you've got 33 feet that's uncontested right-of-way. Why can't you use it? The city uses it on their property. It's not good enough for the public or a private owner. You do the same thing over by the lift station on North Liberty Road. There's a gully down there. You come within six feet of the roadway there. So, your 10-foot bikeway and bike trail and the six feet separating it from the road, if it can be done there, it can be done at our place.
Mr. Belknap, I'm apologizing. We need to recess this meeting because of the tornado warnings. Mr. Hire is going to lead us into a safe place, into the, into the building. We'll be in recess until we're back out safely.
He can hear us.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll resume our council meeting, and Mr. Belknap, you still have the floor.
Okay, and one last thing about alternative spots to running along that road. You're headed for an elementary school. There's a street that's already a stub that has bike trails coming to both sides of it that would follow the fence line out here. There is no obstruction out there. And, you know, there's no hill. There's no highway that's right beside it. It'd make far more sense to have little kids on their bicycles out there than it would along that superhighway. The 33 feet that I talked about, in 2013, we negotiated with the city of North Liberty to be annexed in to the city of North Liberty from Johnson County. There were several items negotiated with, and I can show you those that are in our abstract. Not one, not one word was ever said about changing the right-of-way distance. Scott Peterson, I don't know if some of you remember him, he was your former city attorney. He tried to tell us that 40 feet was the right-of-way now. This was in 2017. Miraculously appearing was a plat that we had never seen before. It's got two lines on it. One's the 33 feet that's always been there, and that's what we've lived by, that's what we agreed to. Then the other one is 40 feet. Grant believes that it's 40 feet also. Scott Peterson gave it up because he knew he couldn't win in court with the two lines, no paperwork negotiating it. He gave it up. So, that's why I'm saying 33 feet along our road is the right-of-way. And we'll fully agree to that, to the 33 feet. The other thing we were supposed to have gotten by now, some sort of drawing that shows what work, what will be affected, the distances, any of that in your eminent domain information? We haven't got that. It's supposed to have been here two weeks ahead of time, according to Grant. We don't have it. So, what I'm asking you right now is definitely come out, take a look. Then the next thing is to remove your vote on July 9th to yea or nay the eminent domain because we didn't, nobody knows what you're doing with it. Come and see us. We'd be glad to show you. And standing out there, your alternatives, they're obvious as they can be. Common sense would prevail. The other thing about being along North Liberty Road by our place, if it's in the 33 feet, I don't care, but if you went into the 40 feet, those little kids are kind of screaming down that hill with guide wires and the big metal electric poles right next to where that bike trail is. Actually, anybody, little kids or anybody else. So, I'm thinking there's a pretty big chance of liability there for somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to make comment tonight, the council? All right, I will move on to item number six. I'll close our public comment time period, excuse me. Item number six, Josiah's our engineer's report.
All right, thank you. Okay, construction updates, a couple of projects going on. Fox Run Pond Trail did get started last week. If you've been by there, they're stockpiling topsoil, moving some dirt, grading, getting the culverts extended. Again, that's, that's the one where the Parks Department is putting in a playground, and that completion is planned for the, for September. So, that's just getting started. The streets and maintenance facility buildings had good progress. The mechanical ductwork is finished. The new mechanical units are being installed upstairs. The drywall is complete and prepped for painting. Doors are installed, and they're doing some work to get the locker rooms ready. The contractor is targeting August to be substantially complete with that project, which would be good. Their, their contract date is to be finished up in October, so, still looking good there. Penn Meadows Park, I reported, I think, a month ago or so, there's some minor punchless items to remain. The contractor is planning to be on site this week to finish some of those up. Penn Street Railroad Crossing Improvements, if you, if you're over in that area, you've noticed the road is open. They opened it on Monday, including the sidewalks, so that work is substantially complete. All that's left is to do, to water, water the sod that was put in for the next month or so. So, that went well. The weather worked well. And lastly, West Penn Street, that's another one where we had an intersection closed out at James Avenue and West Penn Street. That was reopened to traffic going north-south through there. The main section of Penn Street, West Penn Street's still closed, but all the paving work is done, and at this point, they're going to be focusing on grading, backfilling, signage, pavement markings, all those finish-up things. So, they are, they have more days, but they're well ahead of their schedule there. So, looking good on both of those. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Josiah? Thank you very much. Item seven is our city administrator's report.
Thanks, mayor. Just a couple of things from me tonight. First, as you know, earlier in the month, our indoor pool was closed down for quite some time. We had it reopened for three days and then had another issue show up. We actually had a underground light shatter, or an underground light cover shatter, something we'd never seen before. So, it is closed now again. With any luck, it'll be open, but I'm hesitant to say by the end of this week, probably more realistically, early next week, and then hopefully, we'll be good to go for a while. And then, just a couple reminders. One, as we, as we near the July 4th holiday, just to remind folks that fireworks are not allowed to be ignited in, in, within the city limits. Of course, there's sales in the city, so it's a little confusing, but we do not allow for fireworks to be displayed privately. And then, lastly, as we're preparing and getting closer to the Blues and Barbecue event on Saturday, July 13th, we are still looking for some volunteers. So, if you know anyone, or if you yourself are interested, please go to the North Liberty, North Liberty Blues website. It is northlibertyblues.org, and sign up for a volunteer spot. That's what I have this evening, mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Ryan?
Mayor, only question I would have is, how is, how's the pool closures affecting swim lessons? That's a pretty popular activity.
I know that when we, I can't answer that specific to this most recent closure. I know when we were closed for that longer period of time, we were adjusting times and moving those that we could to the outdoor.
So, those that are signed up are still getting?
That's my understanding.
Offers to reschedule?
That we'll get it rescheduled in some shape or form.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Item eight is mayor's report, just a couple of things on my end here. Had a chance to meet with a couple of different homeowners over the past week, various issues. So, we're out, I actually saw Paul. He was doing business, work business nearby when I was with one of them. But the biggest thing was that Ryan and I had the opportunity to be in Washington, D.C., with many in this audience here for a couple of days, right after our last council meeting, and we had the chance to sit with Senator Grassley and also with Representative Miller Meeks. Representative Miller Meeks's office was a lot smaller than Senator Grassley's location was. But I think if you've read any social media or any reports on this, it was, it was a great collaboration and a great event that this group actually organized. Mackenzie here was one of the culprits of it, but she was able to bring in the city of Marion, Iowa City, Coralville, Kirkwood, Co-Collge, the University of Iowa, Greater Iowa City, Think Iowa City, and the Cedar Rapids Metroeconomic Alliance, the Cedar Rapids Airport, Rockwell Collins, Green State Credit Union, and some small businesses on both ends of the corridor. So, we had a broad audience of folks that were there. Three main topics were regarding transportation projects in Iowa City, our Forever Green Road project here, and also up in Hiawatha, the Tower Terrace Road. So, those were all projects getting federal funding. Would be great to have more, so we, we brought those up. Education issues was why the schools were there regarding Pell Grants. The airport is also starting an aviation mechanics program in conjunction with Kirkwood, and they're also hoping to be able to, not, not the airport, but there was an ask for assisting those that are here getting their educations that don't live in United, not U.S. citizens, to a path for quicker green cards once they're completed. So, that was a topic there as well. And then, the business owners just brought up labor issues and extra fees mostly that they have to go through and asking for some thought about that. So, it was an interesting group of folks, and they had a lot of fun. I think one of the side benefits is the ability to meet and know these neighbors more so than just coming to a city council meeting and seeing them at network events nearby. So, all we're looking forward to next, next year, and it was a great event. So, with that, I will pass it off to you guys and to report out on things that you've been doing on behalf of the city as your role as councillors.
Thank you, mayor. I can, I can jump in and start here. Just a couple of things from my seat. It is moving time, so there's a lot of new residents getting settled for the first time in North Liberty, so I just wanted to officially extend a welcome to those folks. Just pass along my thank you and appreciation to our crews that are working not only in this heat and humidity, but as is evident tonight, tornadoes. We have police and fire and all sorts of crews that are working out and all sorts of elements, so I just wanted to pass along my appreciation to those folks. I've been working with the mayor in support of local small businesses. Some of the challenges they're facing regarding some of the, some of the Department of Labor penalties, so that's been an exercise that's, you know, as much as we can do to support our local businesses, I think we should. And so, having that visibility and interaction with those folks has been, has been good. I attended the State of the Airport event at the Cedar Rapids Regional Airport last Tuesday, and then attended the Farmer's Market, first time for this, this summer, last Thursday night, so, been busy.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else? All right. Item number 10, moment we've all been waiting for, Greater Iowa City. Presentation from you all. Good to see you again, by the way.
Thank you. Let me get our presentation here going. Give it a moment. This may be a quicker presentation than we know. Let's see here. There we go. All right, very good. Well, mayor, council members and staff, thank you so much for having us. My name's Nancy Byrd with Greater Iowa City, Inc., and tonight, we really wanted to give you some of the updates regarding the organization. As you know, we've merged ICAD, the Economic Development Group, and the previous chamber of the Business Partnership, and we wanted to share some of those updates with you, and then also make sure that you know our team, our organizational model, and talk about potential opportunities. And I know that we've got a shortened, a condensed night here, so I'm going to zip right through. But first of all, I want to introduce my team. Can you guys go down the line and just introduce yourselves?
I'm Mary Willie, and I'm Vice President of Operations and Business Support.
Mackenzie DeRouze, Senior Director of Advocacy.
Katie Gerlach, Senior Director of Community Development and Executive Director of Better Together 2013.
Austin Corrins, I'm Senior Director of Economic Development.
So, we've got a great team here, and there's been a lot of really big shifts, so I want to make sure that this council's aware. We're really testing a new vision. We have a different approach. We have an inclusive membership model, and we have new services and targets. And I'm going to kind of zip through each one of these and give my colleagues a chance to talk as well. But, you know, when, as the merger occurred, one of the things, you know, we talked about a little bit within the Johnson County is that we really have a new vision. During COVID, there was a significant engagement and new collaborations just to get us through that time period, and as many of you probably remember the time this All In Vision Report was built, and it's really covers the county, all the cities participated, so we really are adopting that as our North Star. Greater Iowa City, Inc. in particular, have adopted really these, there's five pillars in the vision, and the central three are the ones that we're focusing on, which is authentic vibrant neighborhoods and districts, a well-connected mobile region, and a thriving inclusive economic ecosystem. So, those are the work that we're grabbing. We also have a real, we have a viewpoint and approach. Economic development can be quite nebulous, so we wanted to give it a little bit of framework, and so we're adopting a place-based strategy that really, you know, kind of looks at the ground, and I'll walk through a few slides about that. But we're also prioritizing retention, recognizing that attraction occurs, we're going to continue to do that, but retention is really where the meat of the matter is and where we see the growth of the county. We really want to dig deep on being inclusive and that we're advocates for local economic resiliency, and we're guided by four new innovation councils, and I'll walk through those as well. We're going to stick our neck out there a little bit and be brave, and we'll talk about one of the projects in particular here that is doing so. So, that's kind of our approach. Place-based economic development is not new. It's a, we, we're really grasping on some previous research, and if anyone's familiar with the Brookings Institute, it's really well, or it's well-received from both conservatives and liberals, and that's kind of why we're looking at this, this research as helping us drive our map, so that we're making sure that everything that we're doing is, is bound in that. We're, what we're doing is trying to guide investment into activity centers across the county. So, this really takes in transforming the county through placemaking. A lot of people hear about placemaking, but how are we going to do that? There's lots of other terms for this. It really takes on a planning realm. Smart growth, 15-minute cities, livable cities, those are the other terms for this, and I think that North Liberty has done a great job of starting that work in, in the comprehensive plan that you all have. We've done some work in the past. A couple of years ago, Newman Munson did a quick little study using an app for 15-minute city app. There's actually, that's out there, and they looked at Johnson County, and we, you can see across the county here that we already have a number of really great activity centers that are either already almost formed or that are emerging. They really look at a place that's livable, walkable, that has commerce, that has education, that has medical facilities, and they looked at the areas that, number one, are already established, or two, that are possible. And you can see the peach areas there are just kind of emerging. They just need a little bit more structure. So, in North Liberty, there's several opportunities here that we really think that we could look at with the city. Katie did some work with some UI students. We've got a really wonderful opportunity with education and the university to work towards some of these, these studies collectively, so we think we've got a good opportunity to do a lot of really good work. The Karanik Short Line Rail, there's a BRT study right now, and a lot of these areas identify public and private investment district support. You know, we can look at these areas that are already in the study and see if it makes sense to really push investment towards these areas. So, how do we get there? We're going to be working with city staff. We're going to engage North Liberty through forums and invasion councils as they bubble up. This is where we really need to work closely with you all, and we want to call in businesses for those, the interest and seek investors for those areas. There's strong precedence for this type of work from an economic development organization like ours already in place in Des Moines, and it's a really good opportunity to kind of look at that model and see how we can apply it here. They looked at special improvement districts, really in residential areas. We would focus on commercial areas. And through that program in Des Moines, what they do is they look at these areas on the map, and each one will be unique. You can establish programs, you can provide incentives, where we would call in the business community to make sure that we're targeted and right and really kind of push investment in these areas. So, we know image matters in economic development and perception is reality, so we really want to partner, figure out opportunities to leverage, really good collaboration. So, it's a, it's a big goal of ours, and we want to make sure that you all, we'll make sure to invite you to the city lunch connection that we've got. Our North Liberty Coffee is really wonderful, so we kind of continue to keep that public-private opportunity for collaboration alive. We have an inclusive membership model now. Anyone in the county is a member of this organization. We want to make sure that if you need help, or if you don't know anything about us, you are still invited to participate in our forums and that you're, you're a member. We are still asking for investors to come in and help support those and grow the county. So, it's a little bit of a different approach. You don't have to be a dues payer to come in and use our services. So, it allows us to be really, really inclusive. So, we've also gone out and asked for Better Together funds through this process, and so the private sector is really putting up dollars, 20% extra of their investment levels to support that larger vision plan, which really was an unfunded mandate. So, last, our new services and targets. We have local advocacy now. Prior, it was more state and federal, and we're really looking at local. We have a community development corporation with Katie's organization of Better Together that we can use to buy land and actually do development. We are going to implement the Inclusive Economic Development Plan that was adopted by ICAD prior to the merger, and we're really focused on these innovation councils. The Executive Innovation Council, which Ryan Hire sits on, he's got a good voice on that council, he'll start in July. We also have Dr. Jamison of the hospital. She's our new leader there that's really focusing on the North Liberty campus, and these are the other stakeholders on that Executive Innovation Council. So, it's a wonderful group. It's a small group. They'll be very nimble, and they will oversee advocacy. And I'm going to turn it over to Mackenzie, so she can talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, everyone. So, advocacy, we have sort of two pillars of work, I would say, and the first one I want to talk with you about is our leadership programs. We really We really see our role as an organization in helping foster the next generation of leaders. And we have two programs that focus on that. First, our Community Leadership Program, which was launched by the Chamber of Commerce back in 1990, and now boasts over 700 alumni across a variety of public sector, private sector, local companies, who have been involved, many on elected council, as well as serving on nonprofit boards or being leaders in their own organizations. The Community Leadership Program really provides participants the breadth of what's happening in Johnson County across different sectors, including healthcare, education, local government, nonprofits, arts and culture, and hopefully prepares them for engaging in community leadership, however that looks to them in the future, as well as connects them with a cohort of peers that they can continue to collaborate with even after the class is done. Applications are currently open until Friday afternoon. So if you have any interest or you know people, we encourage them to apply. We often have participants from the City of North Liberty staff. Nick Burgess was in my class, 2015, as well as many other staff members. So really appreciate the Cities of North Liberty's support for that program. We also have a new initiative with the Tippi College of Business at the University of Iowa, our Executive Leadership Program. That's in its third year. And that's really, in some ways, an extension of some of the learning of CLP, but it's really targeted for emerging managers or executive leaders. So there's a lot more focus on teams. And so you partner with some of the really best researchers and teachers at the College of Business and tackle topics that leaders are telling us are the most pressing of the day. So this past year, they focused on recruiting and retaining top talent, leading a diverse workforce, fostering a community that promotes well-being for employees, and then leading through strategic change. So those applications typically become available right after Thanksgiving. And if there's any interest in that, I'm happy to talk with you about it. The second pillar of my work is the advocacy work here. Some nice pictures of the group from the DC trip that the mayor referenced. We do, do federal as well as state advocacy. We partner with the Cedar Rapids Metroeconomics on alliance on much of that work. There's influence and power in numbers, and in places where we can align, it's more effective to do so in talking with our state and federal representatives. But as Nancy alluded to, we do have a renewed focus on local advocacy. And so some of the work we're doing in that is certainly talking with you all at events like tonight. I am trying to meet with most city councilors across the county. So if you get an email from me at some point asking to buy you a cup of coffee, or if you're interested in chatting with me, I would love that opportunity to learn why you are running and serving on council and what's important to you, and perhaps how our organization can partner on making that happen. Also, at the local level, we are working on advocacy statements for each of the communities that we serve to really be transparent about our priorities, but also to be targeted on the issues and challenges and opportunities that face Iowa City might be different than Corahville, might be different than North Liberty. So currently, we've convened a task force of business leaders in Iowa City to discuss that. Part of the process is to engage with city leadership as well and staff. That's nearing completion, and then we'll move that process along to Corahville and North Liberty. So those will be, again, public as they're created, but really to give some guidance and some structure to the advocacy work we do with our local partners. But in all of our advocacy work, we're guided by the same principles, which is to be collaborative, strategic, to think about processes and systems and how we can maximize partnerships, and then also to bring together diverse coalitions. With that, I'll hand it over to Austin.
Thank you, Mackenzie. So Austin Kornz, again, Senior Director of Economic Development. I'm going to get a little bit into the weeds of how we approach economic development through Greater Iowa City. I wanted to mention first that we have our Economic Development Innovation Council that is chaired by Nick Linsley from Newman Munson Architects, who sits on our Executive Council, and then Jasmine Almoyed, who runs workforce training programming for Kirkwood Community College. And there's a few of the things that, you know, at the beginning, we decided we were going to focus on, and that council is rapidly evolving as people are really wrapping their arms around it. But before I get into some of the core work of economic development that we focus on, I wanted to mention something that we, we also think is very important, but we're still mulling over. We're still trying to figure out exactly what this looks like in action. Nancy spoke about place-based approach to economic development. What does that look like from a very business-led perspective? And what we think that that could be is some hyper-targeted marketing around specific districts in, in our various communities. Here in North Liberty, something along the lines of, very hypothetical, the Centennial Park District or something like that, something that is business-led, and then we can focus specific marketing around to try and work on that brand for these micro-business areas around our various communities. This, a lot of, a lot of text on one slide, I'm aware. But one of the ways that we are considering going after this, and we'd love to have further discussion about it, would be a stakeholder process with our business communities in these specific areas that we can identify together, work on establishing collateral, figure out what that brand is, and then help to promote that brand. And then ultimately, we think that this could be the proof point for a larger strategic investment district that we can focus on as we try to move this forward. So we could, we could pick individual areas to really hyper-focus on, and then maybe show that there really is a there there that we can drive down on, and then work on what that looks like as a sustainable business-led initiative moving forward. So that's something that we are talking about right now. We'd love to have more conversations about. But I also want to get into some of the things that we are doing right now and we, we think about every day. And BRE, from a, an economic development standpoint, this is probably the majority of what I think about every day. How I can get in front of our businesses and how we can work on establishing good relationships with our business community, and then address issues with our business community before they become the kind of issues that make somebody have to relocate or downsize. The number one tool that we use for our BRE program is our Business Success Surveys. We released our Business Success Surveys for this year in early May. We are up to 32 of them we've, we've gotten responses on. We love to rely on this group right here to try and grow that number in North Liberty. We are aiming to get 75 this year. And then we follow up on those Business Success Surveys. Once we've kind of gotten that strictly economic data about the business, we follow up with them and have a conversation about how we can be a better advocate for them in their community, in their state. The, the types of issues that can come up in a meeting like that would, would surprise you. Things that, everything from a left-hand turn signal that doesn't allow them to have a good shift change to, you know, major utility problems that if we're able to address now, might not be a larger problem down the road. So that's a, that's a big part of our, of our programming. But the one that people think about the most is probably business attraction. Business attraction is a definite number two, because we really want to focus on the businesses we already have here, people who have already committed to being here, and how we can help, help them grow here. However, when we have opportunities from outside the region that we think could be a good fit for our communities, primarily around these, these four industry clusters that we've highlighted here, we, we really do try to go after them with everything we've got. We work collaboratively with Ryan and his team with the city to consider these different opportunities on a case-by-case basis and figure out how we can work with these businesses and see what it would look like for them to, to choose the, the Iowa City region, and then how they can establish and grow here. One thing I should point out there, the two biggest things that we focus on with business attraction is community fit and high-quality jobs. If you aren't creating high-quality jobs in our region, it just, it likely isn't a fit for the future of our region. Real estate development is, is kind of that, that third tier, the, the third vertical that we, we think about around economic development. And really, this is a vertical of necessity. We have to be thinking about real estate and future development, because it comes up so often in BRE and business attraction. It is how businesses often grow. It is how businesses who are choosing the area find where they're going to do their work. We spend a lot of our time collaborating, collaborating with landowners and business owners, or landowners and construction companies and architecture and engineering firms to figure out how we can create those areas for growth for people when that time is right. We use Location One Information System as our main database for that. And that is a, a database is updated daily with up-to-date listings for sites and buildings in our region that, that we put in front of potential businesses as they consider choosing here or growing here. Finally, I do want to mention the Bill Johnson County Event Series. We have been doing this since the ICAD days, and it's a carryover. People really, really do seem to enjoy this series. It is an opportunity for business leaders and people in the construction, architecture, engineering, brokers, landowners, that, that world to interact directly with city leaders and community leaders, so that the first time that they have a conversation isn't in this room. So that we are making sure that we establish those good relationships, so that people know how to work together and who to talk to when that time is right before it could come to a more difficult conversation down the road. And then the last thing I want to point out, these are our business development KPIs. We establish these for fiscal year '22. They are ending here in a week. This is where we, where we landed. We set aggressive goals for these KPIs. These are exclusively dollars and jobs that we can point to having worked on in our community, projects that we have been actively involved in. We have moved the goalposts once. The, the North Liberty Hospital made us reach our KPI goals, our key performance indicator goals, very early on. So we had to move those goalposts, or I was just going to have nothing to do for a couple of years. So that's, that's how it's ending right now. But we are actively working right now to kind of redefine what our KPIs look like for the next three years, five years, depending on what my council wants to set for me, and then what other KPIs we can consider outside of these pure economic ones. What, what it would look like to have quality-of-life KPIs, things like that. So that's all I have.
All right. Well, I hope that isn't hail we're kind of hearing up there, but it's very dark. Business support innovation is the area that I lead, and we're really focused on three different areas. Workforce, inclusive economic development, and then entrepreneurial and business support. So the council that leads our work, our chairs are Joni Traister. She is with the University of Iowa HR, and then Ginny Wonderlick, who is a small business owner in south side of Iowa City. She's, her family's been in business for 60 or 70 years, but a good representative for small business. In those focus areas, talent attraction and retention is really important. Offering meaningful connection opportunities, which you see here as ribbon cuttings. It's our lunches, the breakfast we hold here, groundbreakings, referral groups. DEI and inclusive economic development initiatives, and then small business education and financial support. So workforce development, some of the areas we're working on there are the support we're providing, talent attraction and marketing. We are working with the state Talent Hub. We also have a member of our team who is one of the community collaborators to help support that. That's a program that the state has just started, and we've already had our first request come in from someone who is interested in moving here to work in this area. And we expect many more as the state begins to ramp up their marketing for that. Currently, we have the summer program for Ignite IC interns. We had an event last week at Penn Seekers, and we had 120 interns that were there, a good number of them from the Johnson County area. We really like to support interns, because it's a good source for hiring people for your, your businesses and your organizations that have already become connected with you. And then finally, Inclusive ICR Coalition is a group in Johnson and Lynn County and throughout this area that looks at ways of being inclusive in the workforce. So business resources, there are two areas here that I think are particularly relevant for North Liberty. We are working to start a Merge Business Resource Center. And this really parallels very well with the work that Kelly Forkenbrock, your librarian, just recently certified as an entrepreneurial librarian. We would, Kelly is already one of our ambassadors, so we're very familiar with her and the quality of work that she does. We're really hoping to be able to partner more with the libraries and to take Kelly's work, not just here in North Liberty at the library, but countywide as well, too. She's a tremendous resource and, and has always been a great partner with us. The other area that I think is a huge opportunity is the North Liberty Co-Working Lab. We do support the lab with the technology background for scheduling and for renting already. We also promote that through our Merge IC website. And Jeff and I have had a recent conversation about ways that we could get together and maybe talk more about a larger partnership that would better help us support businesses in North Liberty and things that we could do together. And again, you know, just very quickly, we do industry circles with different categories, for example, HR or marketing, to bring those people together, and again, to support businesses. And then the goal of all of this is to foster North Liberty's local businesses by providing resources. And of course, entrepreneurial support. Our goal is to support businesses, both in the startup phase, but businesses that are existing and maybe have been very long-term as well through the resources that we provide. And now I'll turn it over to Katie, and she'll talk about community development.
All right. Katie Gerlach, Director of Community Development and Better Together 2030. Some of our highlights this year were that we incorporated the Community Development Corporation. Brent Smith is our Vice President of our Board of Directors, so you're well represented on that board. We have done a great job in this last year about integrating the services of Greater Iowa City and Better Together, because we knew that the last thing we needed was another community development organization to stand up operational support. So I've now embedded in the Greater IC staff, and all of our work continues across both Think Iowa City, Greater IC, as well as the Community Foundation and United Way, which lead Pillar Five. So my work is guided with Greater IC by Community Development Innovation Council. Your staff member, Nick Burgess, is a co-chair of that council with Lisa Shalany, the President of Hill's Bank. She's on our Executive Council and reports up to that Executive Board. Our focus areas this year are identifying those strategic investment districts with a data-driven approach, as well as looking at the livability aspects that are needed for each, cultivating continued public-private partnerships, supporting additional affordable housing opportunities and other pilot projects. And everything we do, we try to pitch the path for federal, state, and local funding opportunities. So in terms of livability, we experimented this year with affordable housing with 3D printing. You can see some of your staff and councilors right in there. Tracy joined us, Eric. And we had a great time learning about the printing, and we were incredibly grateful. We didn't sign a contract with that 3D printer. So thank you, Tracy, for that. Tracy has provided a lot of guidance to us as part of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. And so with that guidance, we were able to slow the contracting process down, and Muscatine signed a contract with a 3D printer that maybe wasn't quite ready to print full homes. But we're getting there, and I think the most important part is that that's what our job is as Better Together and Greater IC, is let us experiment, so that the private sector doesn't have to. We can try those things. We can take those risks. And so it really was a successful experiment, in my book. Also, a good test of my growth mindset. We're supporting the Family Resource Center, which is a collaboration of large nonprofits that are developing a large co-located, no-cash grocery store, along with a large gym for youth, as well as Table-to-Table's new location. And as you'll see in the next slide, it will be connected, hopefully, by train to North Liberty in a 15-minute train ride. Childcare continues to be a significant issue and workforce issue in our community. So we've launched the Childcare Wage Enhancement Program as part of the Childcare Solutions. Many of you have seen this presentation at the wage, at the Joint Entities Meeting, so I won't go too far into depth. But just know that we have already raised $1.6 million, and that additional $170-ish thousand is private investment, and we're hoping to grow that. The City of Iowa City and Johnson County will be supporting a full-time fundraiser for us to go out and launch this more broadly. But I will come back and ask for your support as a, a large employer as well. Transit is where we've seen a lot of success, and as Nancy Transit is where we've seen a lot of success and as Nancy mentioned, kind of sticking our neck out there with some pretty big projects. So, you know, while we've supported a transit work group, we worked with Angela and your team there as part of the Trip Connect Grant Workshop and connecting employers for that. We have a stakeholder participant on the BRT Study Group and we've been working on active transportation plan submissions that match our local plans for EC Cog. The most exciting thing we're working on is a crandic train pilot. So many of you have seen this presentation from the pop-up Metro team. And what that would do is that would be a pilot live study that would connect North Liberty to Iowa City in about a 15-minute train ride. It's a pilot, so it would be a three-year study, but it would be a live study where we'd have modular platforms, we'd be able to test the locations, and really work on seeing if people are going to use this transit solution before investing the billions and millions of dollars that would be needed through federal and state grants to build it out. And this will just give us actual rider numbers. It also gives our municipalities an opportunity to say, if you don't use it, we're done talking about this crandic line, which we have all studied to death. So with that, we welcome your questions. We appreciate your participation and involvement so far and we're excited to see what comes It's quite a color behind you. If we're making faces at you, is that the windows?
We were having this discussion during the recess that I think Paul was talking to somebody at one point in time and they didn't realize there was a tornado behind them and he was like looking at them and like waving to him. So we think there's something behind us, but we can't tell what it is back there. Do you guys have any questions for this group? And first of all, by the way, thank you for taking time to come up here tonight and, and to introduce yourselves and talk about this with us. I know we all have different things that we are involved in with this organization, but are there any things that come to mind that you want to ask them about that you might not have, they want more clarification on?
Do you want to drive the train, Brent?
I might want to drive the train.
Yes.
If I get the hat, I might want to drive the train.
It's always the hat.
Mayor, I would just say, I appreciate meeting with Nancy and Austin after Lunch Connections here in North Liberty. They came up to Lunch Connections and they were very open to my input, my questions, seeing my view on the economic development, as you all have heard a thousand times up here. And one of the first reasons why I ran, or one of the reasons I ran for my first term, what I appreciate about this group is, and it was even on the slides, your willingness to be brave and do new things and be collaborative and innovative in the way, ways in which you're looking at partnering. We've heard and we've been part of this partnership for a long time. We've invested in this partnership for years. We've had staff on, on councils and all of that. And we have heard for a long time and we've seen successes of the collaborations that have occurred. Tonight's the first night and I'm, I'm very appreciative and very excited having a hyper-focus in North Liberty. We love our neighbors and we work well with Iowa City and Corvoval and Tiffin and everybody around us. The, the regional cooperation and coordination that we've had for a long time has yielded some wonderful things. Little Brother here in North Liberty is excited about all the new things that we have and that we want to share and that we're growing and building, as is Tiffin, as is Corvoval. So I, I appreciate that look and that idea and that olive branch and that reach out to be able to start something new, which is, you know, being focused on North Liberty and what we can do with the businesses here and how we can get additional businesses here. I appreciate Austin's view, understanding that workforce and land are our two biggest turtles here in North Liberty. And I think staff certainly understands that. I know the mayor does as well. We've talked about that in the past. So it'd be interesting to work with you guys and, and work through those and make North Liberty better on the economic development front. So very appreciated. Thank you.
I don't know if you all appreciate Counselor Smith's words after having spent time with him all these years as he's been beating this drum. So that's high praise and we're very grateful, again, for your time up here. So not to belittle that at all, but I'm glad to hear that. That was your experience. Any other questions or comments?
Not a question for me and, and I'll echo Brent's thoughts a little bit. I don't have quite the track history on city council as Brent does. I'm just started in January. But in my short time in this window, I've gotten to know a few of you already and, and really appreciate the effort that has gone into not only the presentation, but the review and being intentional with the strategy and execution of the strategy. I think that's important to always keep, keep an eye on. It's one thing to have ideas, right? But how are we going to get there? And so what I, what I've seen and built with this group, I look forward to continuing that relationship. You know, we see each other more and more frequently every, now. So McKenzie, looking forward to that coffee invite. I'm going to have to buy my own, but.
He passed.
Yeah.
Good test.
That test.
Good test.
Grant is so proud of you.
He's new, but he's a quick learner.
Yeah. So, no, I just really wanted to say thank you for the effort into this. I look forward to continuing to build that and assisting and supporting your efforts and leading not only the strategy, but the execution of it as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I would just add quick, the Community Leadership Program is, you know, something I graduated from and that I would encourage, you know, it sounds like, you know, some staff has already been through it, but it's a very great program, not just for the education piece of it, but when it comes to collaborating, you know, with, with our cities nearby, the relationships that I built. You know, I got introduced to Rakisha Harrington, past counselor, and probably the reason that I got involved on, on council was the conversation and relationship with her and Josh Mo in Iowa City was in my class. And so anyway, just a shout out to CLP, you know, and all the.
What a year. All three of you are in one year.
Yeah, it was more than that. It was, it was a lot of fun. But I would encourage any staff, you know, that can to, for us to support that.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you all again for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around and stay dry.
I might have to.
Might be a need necessary. Item 11 is our Board and Commission Appointments and item A is Council Confirmation of Mayor's Appointments. They are in your packet, but I will take a moment just to read them out loud. One thing I will mention, and as I, I learned was unique to me, is that I reached out to each of these folks and either have a conversation with them or leave them a message and they call me back in text messaging. So I've had a chance to talk to all of them. You've read all of their applications and some of the, the backgrounds that they bring to these boards and to these commissions. So being added to our Planning and Zoning Commission will be Valerie Ward alongside of incumbent Dave Willer. Our Board of Adjustments will now include Ally Metzger. Our Parks and Rec Commission will now include Kevin Smith alongside newly-appointed Dong Lin Kai and Gwen Johnson. Our Tree and Stormwater will now add Daniel Green. Our Library Board will now include Scott Kramer and Brandy Green. And our Cemetery Board will add officially Derek Burns. And as you've seen in emails and Ryan's attachments, just through an absence in the packet, Erica Wade will continue to serve on our Cemetery Board. So that was in an email that Ryan sent out, so that'll be in addition. Her information got to us way, way early and I think just wasn't part of the, the wave that got to me for review. So I've talked to Erica and she's cool with that. She currently serves and will just be replacing somebody that's resigning from the board in there. So with that, could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Appreciate that work, Mayor. It's, it's easy to just take the applications and forward them on and bring them to the council, but you're, you're going above and beyond and having those conversations and relationships that matter, so thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate that. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12 is the Iowa State Recreational Trails SRT Program grant and item A is Resolution Number 2024-70. And this is a resolution supporting the City of North Liberty application to the Iowa State Recreational Trails SRT Program. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13 is the FY 2025 Salaries and Wages and item A is Resolution Number 2024-71. This is a resolution authorizing salaries and hourly wages for city employees for the fiscal year of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is the FY 2024 Transfers and item A is Resolution Number 2024-72, a resolution approving additional transfers for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There's a great question to Ryan yesterday. Are there any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is Solomon's Landing Part Two and item A is Resolution Number 2024-73, a resolution releasing surety and accepting improvements for Solomon's Landing Part Two in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Next, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16 is Solomon's Landing Part Three and this is Resolution Number 2024-74, a resolution approving the final plat for Solomon's Landing Part Three in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 is Buck Moon Villas LLC and this is our third consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-04, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from RS6 Single Unit Residential District to RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District. Could I have a motion for consideration and adoption, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any final questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, item 18 is Primestone Residential Rezoning, and this is also a third consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-5, 05, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa from ID Interim Development District to C2 Highway Commercial District on approximately 7.65 acres to RM12 Multi-Unit Residence District on 17.01 acres to RM8 Multi-Unit Residence District on approximately 9.18 acres and to RS6 Single Unit Residence District on approximately 9.9 acres. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Leibold?
Aye.
Wason?
No.
Motion carries. Item 19 is old businesses. Anything out there from old business, you guys?
Maybe way back, the current closure of the, the indoor pool got me thinking about our, the plan that we're making for recreation, the rec center in general, right? We were working on a plan for maintenance and maybe upgrades. Is that right?
Yeah, that, that was more, that was a facilities plan, so really focused on maintenance, not necessarily new amenities, but just maintaining what we have. As we saw some of these larger issues pop, like the indoor pool heater was one and we had the boilers is another one. So that plan really focused on existing infrastructure.
And, and maybe now, maybe I'm getting into new business, but those three days that the indoor pool was open, the dehumidifier was not working. So there, that's an issue, too. I mean, it seems like we're having a lot of issues. Maybe we need to do a deeper dive into, to some of these structures.
We, that was the intent of the, the facilities plan, was to prioritize what needed to be addressed. And in some of these cases, I'm not familiar actually with the dehumidifier and what went wrong there. Some of it maybe was identified a little bit later, though, in the plan. And of course, we knew all along, we have to be nimble if something goes first. I would note, and I think we just released something about this work, it's 20 years old, this, this, this month and, you know, it's, I suppose it ages like a dog. It's, it's probably more like 100 years old, you know, just because it, those facilities are, are, I mean, they're hard to operate and expensive.
And remind me, did we, we didn't really have any specific goals related to the rec center or anything in our goal setting?
I, I can't recall off the top of my head. That actually is going to be coming to you sometime in July for final approval, but I, I don't, I believe you're correct on that, but I just can't quite remember.
Okay. That's all I had.
Sounds good. Thank you. Item 20 is new business. Yes, sir.
Fireworks in Penn Meadows Park for the 3rd of July.
Yes, I believe that is.
Yep. You haven't done that in a long time.
That's correct.
It's outstanding.
And remember the Rancho House Friday concerts?
Points.
Mayor, I'll be attending the 100-plus Men and Women's Event here in town hosted by Field Day. So, you know, there's other staff that are part of that group. If that's something that interests you, please look up 100-plus Men or Women. A great organization to be a part of.
Can you remind us when that date is?
Thursday night, beginning at 5:30.
This week?